They are saying that? They are saying that? No matter what, huh?
Okay.
Hi, Dottie, can you hear me?
Yep. Can you hear me?
Hi, Dottie, can you hear me?
Hi, yeah. I don't, just a minute.
I don't hear you.
Yeah, I'm trying to get my mic, just a second.
I see your mouth moving, but I don't hear anything.
That's all right, I'm trying to...
Tammy, this is Jackie, can you hear me?
Um... I'm on here.
Jackie, can you hear me?
I can hear you and I can hear Dottie, can you hear me?
You can hear me, but I don't hear you, so I need to figure it out. Well, I'm not hearing you here. I think I may have figured it out.
Hello. Hello.
Hang on one second, I'm turning on the projector, that might help. Believe it or not.
I'll go up and get my charger.
No, I can't, I'm...
Alrighty, little battery. I'm out.
Hi, everybody.
Jackie, can you talk for me?
I can always talk. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
There you go, now I got you. Okay. We're good, I think.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Abby.
Hi, Alicia and Kevin. And Dan in the back.
Oh, no, that's Officer Wilshma.
Hello, Daddy.
Good save it.
Welcome, everybody.
Daddy, that's Officer Wilshma. Yeah, Dan wasn't able to make it tonight.
You have a pretty little baby, Addie, Abby.
I'm babysitting the grand dog.
I have one too.
Oh, it's him? How you doing, buddy? What are they doing, man? Alright, alright. Let's see. I will get to it.
You're just real cheering?
Yeah, because...
Okay.
And Abby? We're live.
Live?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
This case has so much to do with...
We'll laugh with them.
Alright.
Yes.
Excuse me, your son is dead.
You know, I was wondering... That's where I can't get me, like, don't, don't say anything.
It's, um...
You never know the first...
It was, it is really...
No, I can't, well, my...
Only for you?
I have 10, so I'm getting so considered for little. She doesn't consider us that little.
In a speech, I pass the great...
And, uh, and when we get older, it's just moving out, you know?
But this one is...
Exactly. Hey, Tammy, how you doing? I'm good, man.
Yeah, the, uh... Because of the school board meeting, I think it's a problem, I see. There's...
Upper game for like a rock class or whatever?
Question about that, we got any...
And I know Eddie, Eddie Reston Peace passed this week, I think this is an honor of him.
Well, I took that time back there, I was gonna perform for you.
Tammy, this is Dottie. Um, can you ask Brandon to move so that we can see him?
Yeah, I'll move over to this table.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Dad.
You know, my friend, he might just turn... Might just turn that thing up top.
Oh, hi, Suji. About now, Daddy?
Yeah, I see you. Yeah.
I didn't want to be rude enough, no.
Okay, it's 6:30. It's 6:30, so we will go ahead and call this meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, yeah, I'll tell you defendants, um, President Forden?
Here.
I'm here, Alicia Bronson?
Yes.
Daddy Millsaver?
Here.
Scott Baxter? Let's see, Scott, um, Craig Corbly? Uh, Corbly, you here? And... Uh, the screen, Abby Green. You're right there, Green, I apologize. Very cute dog. Alright, we got the phone.
Thank you, Brandon. Um, Kevin, I'm 9.04 on the agenda. We have a pledge, one, um, note to be made in the classroom. One, it was counted A, not B. So, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion, um, it is... First amendment, I'm random.
Let's see, 9, 1, 6, 7, 1.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we add a policy point, or 0167.1 to the agenda.
I can do that.
Alright, I'll take a vote, um, Ms. Bronson?
Yes.
Forden?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Millsaver?
Yes.
I think motion passes, I agree.
And we will... Um... So, the purpose of this special meeting is for discussion for the Michigan Department of Education Learning Plan for the Penfield School District, and, um, we do have a committee of a whole meeting next Sunday night that this will also be touched on a little bit, um, just as a board, we want to have some discussion for each member and take care of the policy that we will be able to vote remotely, um... With these new orders that have been out, even though we can have an in-person meeting, there will be people that have been exposed to the COVID that may have to be quarantined and will not be able to be in an in-person meeting, so that is a concern for changing the policy on privacy voting. So, at this time, we'll take some comments from the public.
Well, you have two people that signed up, both are here, so Diane Mills, I see you there. Uh, if you want to go ahead and unmute, and you have the floor, and just remember that, um, the board listens, but they may not answer you, but, um, someone, we're taking notes, someone will get back with you to, uh, discuss anything that you've said here online, okay?
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. Um, so as a grandmother of elementary and middle school students, I have a joy and a concern. I am overjoyed with the sixth grade virtual learning at Penfield Middle School. I must admit, I was initially very skeptical, knowing that going from elementary to middle school is a huge transition. That being said, I want to give a shout out to the Penfield Middle School and their sixth grade team, including Mr. Gars, the art teacher that my grandchild has. I am impressed with their dedication to their students' learning and the quality of their lessons. I've also observed their ability to be flexible in their teaching and grading students, adjusting to the challenges of assignments for students. I'm not gonna lie, it is not easy to support my grandchild at home. Of course, grandparents and parents know nothing, as you know, and I can't wait for the time kids can return safely to school. Until then, keep up the good work, sixth grade teachers. Now, for my concerns. Having grandchildren in the K5 hybrid model, I have to say, it is not what I expected. As a retired elementary teacher, 20 years in second grade, I really believe these students needed in-person instruction. However, I expected the quality of the days when they were not in person would be far better than it is. 30 to 60 minutes of virtual instruction per week in addition to the in-person adds up to only 13 hours of instruction total. I know second graders, this is not an age, um, that they can flourish with such a small bout of instructional time, especially after six months off from last year. It is critical that in this grade, they, they use the skills that they learned in first grade so that they can master them in second grade with a lot of one-to-one and small group learning every day. They won't get a second chance at second grade. Um, I appreciate the challenges the district faces with the decisions that they've had to make and the limitations. The one piece I don't know is what other than with the middle school, what total virtually learning would be like for elementary students. I don't know how many hours that they would be on, um, receiving instruction. I don't know if they could get one-to-one like the kid students in the middle school or small group do when they have the office hours, um, so I really don't have anything to compare the elementary school program to the, um, into the, um, hybrid. But I, I've, I just think that, um, I have concerns because I have a second grader that has been affected by this, and, um, as many other people, families have. And, um, I really think that, again, it's not an easy situation for you all, but I felt compelled to, um, uh, speak what I think and also offer that, um, I, I think that there needs to be more conversation between parents and grandparents, if it, like myself, and teachers and administrators as forming like a task group to discuss from the different ends of the program, you know, how it's impacting their child. They see it from one camera or one view, but they don't see it from the view of the, of the families at home and, and the impact that it's having on them, especially when some of the, a lot of these kids are in daycare programs that aren't able to support them on the days that they're, at the times that they're not in school. Um, I would be willing to offer my services, um, to be on a task force, if that's something that you decide in the near future, um, to take on. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, next person is Teresa White, and I do believe she's there.
I am. Members of the board, as co-presidents of the Penfield Education Association, we would like to thank you for caring for our staff and students by voting to have six 12 students learning virtually and K5 hybrid. Unfortunately, since the last time you voted, the number of students, both virtual and hybrid, as well as our entire community, have positivity numbers that have risen substantially. Our community test positivity rate went from a 2.7 at the time of your last vote to a 6.4% rate earlier this week. Our hybrid staff members and students have been exposed to students that have tested positive and have been required to quarantine, and sadly, we also now have staff that have tested positive. In Calhoun County, from September 26th to October 3rd, the number of positive cases increased 114%. One of our board members stated at the last meeting that we're going through all of these safety precautions for only a few students, when in reality, there are many, and if we had not taken these precautions, the number of positive cases, both students and staff, would be much higher, with the risk to staff and students also much higher. As many articles have stated, as well as experience from doctors in our area, children with symptoms are not always being taken for testing, so in actuality, the numbers of positive children is most likely higher than stated. According to Princeton University, studies are finding that children are the key to spread of COVID, and they now have evidence that they are super spreaders. When students are in and around each other, obviously, exposure and spread is much higher. We're seeing it with our athletes and high schoolers, we're seeing it in our elementary schools. With students and families being involved in activities such as building floats, holding parades, and homecoming dances, it's extremely unfair to place staff in the position of having to be in close contact with them daily and placing them and their families at risk. As teachers, we see what's happening with the students, and we talk with a lot of parents daily. We have had almost no parents upset, angry, or pressing us to open. More students are now stepping it up, showing up for classes, and there are fewer failures. They're adjusting, they're getting their students on schedules, and adapting to this virtual environment. A number of parents have mentioned, however, how difficult it would be for us to go back in person and then go back and forth between open and closed due to the positivity rates. A survey was again completed among the teaching staff across the district. A vast majority of our staff are still not comfortable returning to in-person teaching at this time. Also, we are now entering the time of year when it's necessary for us all to spend more time indoors due to the weather. As we all know, this is one of the many concerns from doctors about the probability of increasing the spread of the disease. We need you to follow the science. We need you to care about the staff. We need you to care about the students, and we need you to do the right thing and continue to keep our staff and students safe with virtual learning. Thank you for your time, Tina Fleischer and Teresa White.
Thank you. Uh, so both of our commenters, you guys can exit the meeting, and the email that I sent you, there's a link for the live streaming so that you can continue to watch the, uh, meeting. Thank you so much for, uh, coming in and giving your comments.
President? Thank you. Okay, um, so moving forward... The special meeting was brought with concerns from fellow board members and community members, and, um, Dottie, would you like to start out? And Dottie, would you like to start out with some of your concerns? Oh, you want to do the policy first?
Yes.
Okay.
Would that be okay?
Sure.
Can I get a copy?
Yes, sorry. Thank you. It's really there. Okay, so Kevin and I met earlier and talked about the changes, the constant changes like I had that are going on. And I would like to say thank you, Kevin, for helping us keep track of all those and communicating those changes. So in our policy, the PO 0167.1 states, "All regular voting," which means voting as the board, "all regular," and those special meetings of the board at which the board is authorized to perform business shall be conducted in public. No act shall be valid unless approved at a meeting of the board by a majority vote of the members elected or appointed to and serving on the board who are authorized to vote. A proper record may be made of the vote. Meetings of the board shall be public and no person shall be excluded therefrom. Unless specifically authorized by Michigan conflict of interest laws, any board member's decision to abstain shall be reported and be deemed to, I do not know that word, in the action taken by the majority. Failure to vote absent a statutory expectation or other reasonable ethical basis constitutes a breach of the board's member duty as a public official. In situations in which a specified number of affirmative votes is required and abstentions have been noted, the motion shall fail if the specific number of affirmative votes have not been passed. In situations in which there is a tie vote, the absentee vote represents the deciding vote, the motion shall fail or lack of majority. All actions requiring a vote may be conducted by voice, show of hands, or roll call, provided that the vote of each member be reported. Proxy voting shall not be permitted. If a vote is not conducted by roll call, any member may request a roll call vote. So with that being said, we want to consider changing the proxy voting shall not be permitted and change that to proxy voting shall be permitted.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I thought proxy meant somebody else is voting on your behalf.
That's what I interpreted.
So we, I am not in favor of letting somebody else vote on somebody else's behalf.
Well, we thought that this policy was, if you recall back two years ago, so a year ago in January, when Dottie asked to vote via virtual.
Right.
In the January vote.
I think that's a different policy. I'm not sure, but I do believe there is language somewhere that talks specifically about voting remotely by phone or by video. And I think we already changed that so that it's allowed. But I believe this one is proxy, which is something different.
Okay. I remember we had a discussion during January or December, but I thought it was based on the executive boards because it came out from, so I thought.
You know, Kevin, that was in our last group of policies. Abby is correct. I can try to find the number, but yes.
Okay. Well, then, if that's the case, then this is not a revision. It's a follow-up. Let me check.
It's okay, and play with this little talk.
Yeah. So Jackie, if you would let us know what that number is, and by the end of the discussion, it definitely helps with making sure that it's actually there, because it's not going to.
I do agree with that. I do agree that we want to make sure it's there. I just don't think this is the right one.
No. I will find it by the end. I'll send it to the board.
Okay. Where are the reviews?
Abby, I agree with you. I think this is a different one than what you're talking about. At that time, we did vote that the person calling in on the phone could not make, could not vote.
Right.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. And I think last spring, we updated that and changed it, but I can't remember for sure.
Okay. I can't remember changing it.
Yeah.
I didn't think we had to change it because of the orders.
Okay.
I think that we thought we might have to, but because of the orders, we didn't actually have to.
That makes sense.
Right. I mean, COVID isn't going to go away, so some of these changes that we're making are just going to be, you know, next June, somebody is exposed and has to quarantine, then it won't affect our.
I remember somebody called in prior, prior to me being on board, that was in the military, and the issue is whether or not they could vote. I don't know if that was when Tim was superintendent or not, or if you guys remember that, but that's, that was the issue. Somebody wanted to call in on a reserve duty from overseas and whether that could be accepted. Does that refresh anyone's memory? Because I remember that in this.
I remember somebody wanting to call in for a board seat interview, but that's only.
That was for an interview.
Yeah.
Okay.
Craig or Brandon?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought, I had thought that it was, it was in there already that the military, as a board member, has a right to call in. That was what I thought.
Maybe that's what I remembered, just we reviewed it. Okay.
Okay.
I think it's in there. Jackie will find it.
Okay, thank you, Jackie, for looking at, looking at that of course. And I apologize for the wrong policy. Okay, moving forward to the 3.01, and that's the discussion of the MD Prepartness Plan. I just wanted to make sure that all of our board members and community had plenty of ample time to share what they would like to share when it comes to this and not have a super expensive committee of a whole. Nothing will be finalized tonight. It is just going to be a topic of discussion. Dottie, would you like to start with that?
I, Dawn, I couldn't even hear what you were saying. I'm sorry.
Is there anything, Dottie, that you would like to share or give any input as far as the Prepartness Plan and the current situation or a future situation with the new way of learning?
Okay. The only thing, the only thing that I'm concerned with is the fact that we have failing rate. I believe Teresa might have addressed that in her board, in her letter to the board. I'm just bothered that the transparency out there for all the whole district is not there. And I'm hearing things from three or four different people that really do not understand exactly how to, I'm trying to say that, how to make sure their kids are not failing virtually. It's a, it's a problem with, I think it's a parent problem, a lot of it.
Can I, do I raise my hand or?
Sure.
I just wanted to respond somewhat to Dottie's concern. And I had sent Dawn and Kevin an email this morning from talking to some of the parents that I've been talking to. One of the things that would help that, they believe, is whether, is to, for the school board to kind of get behind the teachers and administration and set aside that homework policy that marks down grades if they're turned in late temporarily, that that would help a lot of the kids that have maybe lost some motivation because they had, were discouraged by that. Even though I know that teachers are giving grace and being generous with their grade policy individually, I think it would be nice for, to be a district-wide exception for this time period to not have that be part of the handbook for this school year.
Thank you, Abby.
That was one of my suggestions. And the other one is, I had a parent who sent me a communication that she gets every week from the Math Science Center, and it's from, from the teacher to the parent, it's not to the student, that she actually had to go out and sign up for. And I know there are similar things on our website for parents to sign up for to get grade updates for their students. But I'm wondering if there's more that we could do there also to connect the teacher and the parents.
Good job.
I'll, if I may, I want to try to pitch our fairness. So there are parents who are concerned right now, is that, I'll say it right now, who's concerned is that it's not just the communication that the teacher has with the student, but when a student is not doing well, that they're not receiving any communication that their child's not doing well in that class. That's kind of a piece of, because they're not knowing or they're finding out after the fact, which is, which is more of a question. I'm trying to pay a friend. So would that be a part of it and then finding out that there are assignments that their child has not completed? And if the parent would have known, he would have been able to catch that earlier. So the question now is grace or the opportunity that the kids who have missed it from the beginning, which would be like five, six weeks now, if they get that opportunity to make up those assignments, even though some of those teachers are doing that, but trying to make it a, set aside the policy of no late warning and allowing those opportunities for those students.
Yes, both of those. And also, just, not just reactive communication, but proactive communication from the school to the parent to check in and say, how is it going? How can we help you, parent or family member? Because right now, I think it's kind of on the child to reach out if they need help. And I think this triangle is much stronger than it's ever been. And I think that there needs to be a more proactive communication from the school to the parent and separate from the student.
So I am going to take the next couple of days so I can report back on Monday the 12th, because the information that I've gotten from building principals who have talked with those teachers who are struggling is that those parents are being contacted by teachers. However, if you have heard is that there is, there is concern with the number of failures that are there. I mean, we've, we've been talking about this for the last three weeks, but I've talked with the building principals. It may be time to bring the building principals in to explain what the conversation has been with those teachers who are struggling and maybe even have a teacher come in to explain it, because there are teachers that we know are going beyond just getting the grade and allowing schools to make it up. Some of the communication I got was that the students are just not showing up, and it's more secondary, or should I say more high school than it is even at the middle school, that the student not showing up and that reaching out to the parent, that that communication has occurred and that we still have some students who haven't come to class or, because they haven't come in or done a assignment, that they're not even showing up. So I think there is a, definitely an issue when it comes to the grades and the number of failures, but I think we need to go a little further to find out because if it's not all the teachers and it's only a few, and I need to be talking with the building administrator and having the building administrator come back and explain what next steps have occurred. And then, we'll take another vote, or should I say, I'll take another vote, and what new measures need to be put in place.
So Kevin, I appreciate that. And I, I think that what I was thinking about was more of a check-in with the parent, even for the kids are doing okay. It was more of a, how's it going? How, I see your kids doing pretty well? How are, are there things that aren't working for you or aren't working for you? Just a check-in with the parent, not just the ones that are struggling or having trouble, all of them, is what I, what I was trying to convey is, how are we checking in with the parents in general, not just the ones that are troubled?
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead, Dottie.
I'm concerned with that idea because the teachers already have their hands full.
Right.
And to me, to me, it seems like the teacher or the parents should be calling the teacher and say, how's my child doing? Instead of making the teacher reach out, which is extra work on the teachers. I also was told too, that there are young people that are playing sports that are not meeting the eligible requirements and saying they did not know that they weren't eligible to play and were trying to complain to Brett about it. I don't know what Brett said. I just know that there were some problems with that.
Yeah. And I read that conversation with our athletic director, Brett Hill, also. And I'm going, I'm going to add that, Dottie, both you and Abby, it is a partnership. It goes both ways. That we should, if I have, and I'm going to use myself as an example, if I'm the teacher and I have a student that has not been doing assignments, even though I've seen them in the Google Meet or they've actually communicated, but they're not doing the work, then as a teacher, I'm going to reach out. That's not for all 120, 125 students that I'm responsible for, but if I've got some 10 to 15, there's, I'm already making two-way communications, as you said, Dottie. As a teacher, I'm doing a two-way communication that has to be done for each of those students that I have. Now, I say that even though we know those are advisory teachers and seminar teachers and prime time teachers. If I have that student in my class and I see that there is a failure, that that student is not succeeding, then instead of me saying, okay, well, and I think we mentioned this even a few meetings ago, instead of saying, yeah, well, that's okay, you know, I've got to move on, I can go another step, because that may be 15 or 20 students, but I still want them to be successful. But that goes both ways, which is why my video says to the parents that go out. I stayed in there in the last two videos, and the next one is coming up tomorrow, is that they, as parents, if they're concerned, please reach out to the teacher and find out exactly why my child is not doing as well in that class. And if they have positive comments, as Mills was doing earlier, the teachers appreciate that also. The only reason I mentioned Abby going back to the building principals, because we've been at this for the last three, three and a half weeks. When I first looked at the scores, because I wanted to give everybody a chance to kind of look in where they are academically and this whole instructional delivery is different, I want to make sure that we are not tasking all the staff with something that a few are struggling with and that the building administrators are trying to help them. This is all about improving teacher practice. So if we have some teachers that are struggling and it is not showing up, or if we have some students that are struggling, some just not doing the work, or some that are truly struggling, then we need to go and first get that answer. And then, by Monday, be able to come back to the board and kind of share where and why these opportunities are occurring. Now, Teresa did mention some of the failures that have already been corrected, because some of them. because some of those students have been given those opportunities, those failure rates are lower. There's also starting, the way we're starting, that a, a pulse on the district was taken last week and we're looking at a survey. Another five weeks from now, we're going to check it again to see if there's any improvements. But if there's some things that we can do along the way, then we're going to make those adjustments as we've done with a few students already who are truly in a bad situation. And we're going to give those teachers an opportunity and administrators to try to reach out and have this conversation in a different manner. So we're not going to push it aside. We have been trying to address it. Those failure rates are going down, they're not as low as we want them to be because we want all of them passing. But that is a, a direction to where before putting a hammer on it, I think we need to check and see exactly what areas need to be addressed more so than all. Because the score numbers are not all.
I was going to be done, but I'm pretty sure I've been misunderstood. So I just want to clarify a couple of things. First of all, I wasn't suggesting that this was from a problem of the teachers because I don't think they're doing anything incorrectly. I think that what I was trying to convey was a general sense of how we view the parent as a partner differently than they were last year and how that's being communicated to the parent. And so I was considering some of the other thing, tools that I've seen used were more automated, so they didn't require the teacher, nurse, teacher to make a call. It could have been an aide or it could have been an automated message, but more messaging to the parents as the other partner in this team of teachers. And that's what I was trying to convey. I was not complaining about teachers doing anything incorrectly and I was not trying to add more things to the work of the teachers.
And, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Abby.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And let me add, it's just when we were doing, looking for, which I said we should be looking for, just as when there was attendance, when students come to class and they didn't show up, a phone call was made later that day to let the parent know, your child was not in class. There are programs, and I say this while looking at Tammy sitting here in front of me, that when there are students that are not completing assignments, there were emails that could go out to let a parent know, child did not complete an assignment. And that's only as the assignment is due. So those are programs that are there. I'm not for sure if we are using Teacher Gradebook, which is a part of Power School, Teacher Power Gradebook, or if we're still using Google Classroom. There are those programs that are available. We need to take another look and see if we can't, how would I say, activate those programs so that those are notices that go out where it is not, as Dottie had mentioned, it's not one more thing that a teacher would have to do because if they're going in and putting in a grade and there's a teacher, a student that didn't do the assignment, that email would automatically go out.
Correct.
That would, that would be most helpful. And over the next couple of days, I'll make sure to come back and report back on that also Monday, as I finish speaking with the administrators at the building level and try and address it with the technology department to see if that, even if they're already just not turned on. So we will, we will continue the work and we will come back on Monday with administrators who's had conversations with those teachers so that those administrators can share exactly where this is the current. If it is, as we're mentioning, if it is a huge problem, meaning it is 78% of the teachers, then we drastically need to change directions with how they're actually trying to get that work done. But I would, based on the data that I've looked at over the last three weeks, we have a few teachers that are struggling and that we need to help. And that help also means that communication partnership with parents with the dialogue back and forth. Tonight and this week and next week, parent-teacher conferences is going to be a big start because there are going to be some finding out now before the semester's over that we can help to get those connections made.
Sure, great. Thank you. No, that's fine.
Okay. Looking at, I, let me just start by saying this. Between the last meeting and this meeting that we're having tonight, I started writing down names of people that were contacting me through email, texts, particularly phone messaging. And I, I have got 26 people that have called me. Make sure that number, 26. And they are saying their kids are failing. Of that 26, I counted just under a third of them were either with IEDs or were with special education. To, to me, there I had four that said that they would like to see that, that it's going great and they want things to stay status quo and that we've made the right decision at this point by not having any of our high school kids in the seats. Looking at that list, and I'll, I'll admit that I'm openly one of the people that has advocated for having kids return to school. So that lends itself to people wanting to tell me that this is how they feel. I understand that. But 26 people have reached out saying their kids are failing. And when I say failing, they are talking about they're depressed. One used the word suicidal. I did make a referral to someone at one point and they asked her to remain anonymous. So I couldn't involve the school in that. But that really concerned me. There were issues involving particularly grades and communication with teachers. Again, I agree with Abby. I'm not putting all this on the teachers. I think we're putting the teachers in a possible situation. On the one hand, we've listened to the representative of the union say that our teachers would be unsafe to go back to work. I'm going to tell you what I'm going to advocate for next week. I'll be asking and making a motion that the kids return to school with the option of having virtual learning. I think we've gotten to the point where it's getting dangerous to our kids to not give some of them that option. We completely ignored the parents when you look at what their initial survey was and what they wanted. And we made the 4-3 goal not to do it. I think we have to look going ahead at what those parents were asking us to do as their representatives. Now, I, I want to remain positive through this process. I want to remain collaborative. I really do. But what I'm going to say next is going to be perceived by some as not positive. But I want you to hear what I'm saying and try to take it to heart. I believe that teachers are essential workers. They are being viewed by their own union as not essential when they're saying they should not have to return to school. If we vote as a board that the kids should be in school for their welfare, for the welfare of our community and district, you are an essential worker, in my opinion. How can you not be? How can we ask the grocery store worker, the gas station attendant, people that you need to conduct your everyday life? How can we not ask the people in the hospitals, those in law enforcement? How can we not say if they're essential that you are not? Because really what you're advocating for, we really want to get right down to it, is you're advocating for not returning to school probably for the next year. And I, I can tell you from what I'm seeing of these 26 people in a small period of weeks, that is a disaster and we will reap sad benefits from that. So that's what I'll be asking for in a few weeks. I am going to try to remain positive through this process, but I realize the comments I made of teachers being essential workers and that they should be required to return to class to be voted that way are not going to be popular with everyone. But I'll tell you, there are a lot of people that think it is. Thank you.
Alicia? My concern is the failure rate. It is definitely a concern.
I'm sorry, Alicia, can you speak up, please? Can't hear you.
My concern is obviously the failure rate. I want to fix that as soon as possible. My concern is also that since we last voted, the percentage has gone up for Calhoun County. I don't, I'm going to speak on my personal experience, and I'm not saying that my personal experience is everybody's because it's not, I know it's not. Right now, my children are doing fine. My high school student is at the Math and Science Center. I do appreciate the Math and Science Center's communication with me and it's, it's weekly and my child, because my child is doing well, I assume that's why it's only weekly. My fifth grade student was struggling at one point and thank goodness that her teacher is on top of weekly letting me know what's going on. And then I saw one and late assignments and I gave that in the bud and she's now doing great. So I trust that. That being said, I am at home. I do know that that is an easier thing for, for me to have. I don't count the work outside the home. I also, but I also want to say that with my, with my kids, whether I'm at home or not, the expectation is there and they know what is required of them. I don't know if that's the case for all the other parents. I'm not going to speak for that because that's not fair. I'm one out of the class of them. I do agree with Abby on reevaluating the homework policy. And my other concern is that because in, I think my fifth grade student, she only gets an hour a day on the computer five days a week with her class. My concern is that there's not enough content. Fifth grade, yes, fifth grade. I'm not saying that the teacher's not doing enough. I don't ever want to say that the teachers are not doing enough. I know they're doing enough. She is on top of getting all communications out with me and I'm sure other parents whether, I hope they're receiving the same. But I do want to say that an hour a day for me is not enough. She is doing the homework, but I don't think that, knowing, being in a classroom just at home, I know how many distractions with just, you know, a few students in that classroom. I know that when I ask my student, because I do not listen for the simple fact that I don't want my, her teacher to feel that she's being watched. But I ask my student that, is, how does it go? And I hear that there's a lot of interruptions, which makes sense, it's, it's period and the fact that we're going virtual. I'm concerned of how many kids are in that virtual classroom. I don't know the solution to what we need to do to move forward, but I would really, really, really like that communication with us at the board to speak on what that should be. If we are not able to bring our students back to the classroom for whatever reason, and I'm not going to say yes when I'm voting or no I'm voting, because I am an open-minded person and I want to hear everything that's going on to make that, that decision. And again, I'm only one vote, so everybody else would be like, no, this is what we're doing and I could not agree. But I do want discussion on, if this, if we have to stay virtual, we need to figure out something else for our students. I know that this is, there's something else out there we're not taking up. I don't know if we're not, I don't know how well the Math and Science Center students are doing. I don't know how all the honor students here at Penn View are doing. I will say that I have not, to my knowledge, I'll have to go double check, I have not received Penn View emails. She is doing well, so I'm not going to complain and I also have not reached out. And I understand that if, that if she's doing well, I don't really want that extra on my student that needs to go to the students that are not doing well or need assistance, especially parents. I also want to be able to figure out how we help our parents continue this way if that is what's happening. Because I don't know how to help my student. I'm not a lot of speed. Both of my kids had to help me with my Chromebook. I don't know how to use it during things. Sorry, Tammy. I don't know how to use the darn thing and my kids live here, do this, this, this. So thank you for the technology department the last few years to actually get them on track because I don't know what I'm doing. But they do. So I, I don't want to, thank you to teachers. Thank you for everybody who's helped. But those are my concerns and if we are going to continue virtual, we have to figure out something else for our students. And I don't know of IEDP. We can figure out them coming in or whoever else needs assistance. We need to be able to figure out something for them. I do not want my students to help at all. That's my best theory. Thank you, Alicia.
I, like I said before, I, I did call a special meeting for some dialogue and for us to have some time for discussion so when we are at the committee of the whole, we don't feel like, you know, we don't have time to share our concerns. One of my biggest concerns is mental health. These times are hard on adults that have already had a process, a lot of different traumatic things in their life. When you get into the lower grades, those children are a great example to us on how to handle things because they're, they're free about it. I do have concern for students in our sixth through 12th grade. It's hard to be in junior high in normal times. It's hard to be in high school in normal times. So when you feel that you are struggling and maybe you don't have a parent, maybe you have a guardian that has no idea how to help you and you're embarrassed to ask for help, and no one really even knows that they're failing yet. You had mentioned that when, you know, we were going to do these two times a week contacts, have we had to go out and knock on any doors up to this point? So those are all, they're like, every student has been contacted.
So percentages wise, because I believe that's equivalent to, I guess I'll speed up. The two-way communication is another reason for speaking to the high school administrators is because the two-way communications percentages are showing that they're higher than all the other buildings. Which is a reflection of if it's not occurring, then is the kid, the student actually there and exists or is that a student that's no longer with us? So those percentages, when looking at the teachers putting that information in, is concerning. It's either there is no two-way communication because the student's not there or there's no two-way communication occurring and the student is there and that's one of the students that's failing and that failure rate is affecting them. So that's another reason for having a conversation. So those two-way communications are occurring. It is not just with the teacher of record, being, I'm the math teacher, you need this teacher, good social studies teacher. The seminar teacher at the high school or the pride teacher at the middle school, they have, like a homework teacher, is making a two-way communication. But as I mentioned earlier with Abby, and what I said, what I mentioned earlier, is that if I'm the math teacher and I have a student or two or 20 that are not doing well, I should not be waiting on the seminar teacher to make that contact. I should be making that contact. And now we're looking at those two-way communications and the percentages of that. And I believe it's because, it's a correlation of those students that are failing and that two-way communication. Now, I can say that's what it is. That's why I'm going to look back because we checked on that before. Hey, Tammy?
I know I'm not, here's the one. I know I'm not a board member and I don't want to interrupt when I shouldn't, but I'm having a hard time not talking. I'm having a hard time not talking because of some of the things that you're saying are concerns. There are answers to that and I, and I want to make sure you know that. First off, we have many tools that communicates with our parents. We have a lot of teachers that use Remind. Remind is constantly sending out messages to parents, hey, there's a quiz coming up, hey, there's this happening, don't forget about this. So general kinds of things that go to all parents, reminding them what's happening in the classroom. People are using Google Classroom which has the ability for a teacher or for parents to sign in as a guardian and get emails as to what is going on in the classroom, what assignments have there been, what assignments have been turned in and not turned in by their student. So that's available to them. And then also you have Power School where as a parent I can go in and set it up to send me weekly or daily emails as to what my grades are. So you may be kind of, they don't know if they're failing yet. I mean, anyone, any kid in school right now can go log in and see what their grades are right now.
No, I, I think most of us do. Okay. Because I mean, I think that they're aware that they're failing, but the parent or guardian may not be aware.
And we can access that too, but we need to remember.
Because for me, as like I would say, I don't know how to use the Chromebook. I think there needs.
And I was going to walk up and take that.
I like. I know. I think that there needs to be some kind of step-by-step to help parents because I'm a visual person.
Sure.
You can tell me on the phone and I'll be just staring at you like, uh huh, and I won't know what to do now.
Can you go to the Penn's webpage?
Yes.
And on the front of the webpage in the news section, there's a news article that says, how to access Power School and there is literally step-by-step instructions with pictures and arrows and.
And I do believe that the school has our technology and voice.
Yes.
Okay. But what I'm talking about are the guardians of students that may not have it at their house.
Sure.
They're unwilling.
Sure.
To come to the school to support that student.
Right. Yeah, I guess my point is just we have. But so the tools, you know, you had mentioned, we're sure they were placed or they were turned out and things like that and we have to set them. So we certainly want to get the message out to parents and guardians that if they want that information, there is definitely a way to do it. So like what I'm saying on the webpage, if they are able to on a phone or on another computer, they can get there, there's the instructions on how to get their account, how to set that account up, how to access that account. They can contact the teachers and get involved in the Remind. Most people have a cell phone and like Remind is specific to cell phones, which is what's nice about that because it's all text. So we have, so I agree, I think we need to make sure that that word is getting out as to what is available. And we can certainly do that. I mean, we can certainly make sure that that information gets out. And I know that many of our teachers, you know, I can't tell you a hundred percent, but I know many of them are using these tools. So we could, and I know you said you could figure that out, we can find out and we can do that for you, but maybe we just make a really good push on advertising what we have.
Yes. Yes, like what is communications? Yes, because I'm looking, I'm looking at that webpage right now and at first I didn't see it, but now I see where it says Power School in black, how to access Power School and split K-12 messaging system. That's red set, that's what you're talking about, right? Okay, so it's towards the bottom, just for, I don't know if it's for the sun, it's on the left.
It's going to spin there.
Yeah.
So it gets pushed down.
Yeah.
And I can push it back up again.
Can I?
So we just. I think of advertising.
I think that's what needs to happen.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Tammy, I just want to say, when I started out talking about proactive communications to parents as the partner of the teacher, you just explained what I was talking about, that we're not doing what we should be doing. So you just, it said a whole bunch of stuff that could be said to parents before their kids are in trouble, before they reach out and help them and contact them. The other thing that I think that I wanted to just mention that you talked about was all the different tools. So the teacher, there's too many tools and each teacher has been able to find the ones that work best for them. And I think there's been enough time, all teachers should use Remind or all teachers should use Google and it shouldn't, especially a sixth or 12th grade parent shouldn't have to have three or four different ways to communicate with the school. And so I know we're in this learning and upward curve of learning curve, but I would really like to see us move towards some consistency in some systems where the parents can rely on something being the same from one class to the next.
Yeah, I would agree with you on that and we've actually been working on that for the last couple of years. And I know we've been working with the middle school, they were, I think they were totally trying to go with Remind. So we are trying to take those tools and kind of put them down into a fewer number. I mean, I would say Remind, Power School and our Google Classroom are the three major ways that parents can get information.
Yeah, and I haven't, I haven't heard of any, I haven't had any parents talk to me who are actually getting those kinds of communications. So I just haven't talked to the parents that are in those classes.
Okay, yeah, and I just want you guys to be aware because you're not, you don't see this all day and day. I have been in the thick of this, so I wanted you to know that it is there, but I totally agree, I think we just need to advertise.
With that being said, you know, I had a couple of students that shared with me that they also, as Abby said, wish that there was more of, you know, like one teacher may use Google Meet, one may use Power Learning and so on. And that was a little, you know, confusing that I thought it would be easier to kind of have the same thing across the board. I also did vote for in-person and virtual. That was what I was hoping for for our district as well. And I think for students and guardians to have an option as far as learning virtual or in-person is beneficial for both sides. I feel like, you know, for the ones that are concerned with the, you know, undermining illnesses or the spread or the, you know, exposure to this COVID, by offering the virtual learning, they are able to do what they need to do to feel safe. Also, the people that would feel safe for their child to be in-person as far as mental health and educational health, academics, I think in-person is critical. From what I've been hearing from my community, they are very concerned that their child, as Ms. Diana Mills mentioned, and Alicia mentioned, that their child is not getting the same amount of instruction time. And but one hour a day, and I think I even had a parent say that her child was receiving two hours a week of instruction and just not being enough, you know? I know we have a excellent staff and administration here and everyone's working very hard. From the data as far as our grades, we as the board have some responsibility to ask what can be done. So that is what I'm here for tonight. I will, you know, what can we do to help our students? And not just academically, but to make sure that they are safe all the way around, the whole child. We brought that off in our strategic plan that we're here for the whole child and I have a very deep passion for that. So I think that we can do it safe. I think that, you know, we have the financial benefit here at Penfield to provide our teachers with the PPE and provide our students with, you know, stickers for passing in the hall and the plastic. I mean, we're doing it currently in our elementaries. So I feel like if we are doing it for them, we can also do it for the sixth through 12. And I think there's been enough time for our students to understand respecting one another when it comes to this COVID. Diabolical with chaos. And we did have, we are being patient and showing grace and that's really all we can ask for. And I will continue to support virtual and in-person and the action for learning and Penfield district.
Could I ask one question?
Yes.
I can't, I can't, sorry, I can't see you guys very well, so I can't tell if someone's starting to talk, so I don't.
I had that same problem.
You're good, you're good, go ahead.
Okay. So I would like to ask the administration, Kevin, you and your team, you've heard the big concern with having kids out of school is there are some children that are, it's not even the academics, it's the other parts of their life, their physical wellbeing and their mental wellbeing. And I would like you to give us some alternatives to address that if, if the administration isn't going to recommend having a hybrid for sixth through 12. We need you to tell us, okay, then what? For these kids to address these needs. That was all.
Absolutely.
I want to, I want to piggyback what you just said and add this. My biggest concern from the beginning of this, I think we have fantastic teachers in administration because I've seen them working in our district. When the kids were in school, we didn't have COVID, it was obviously different circumstances in other world, right? They're amazing. I've met so many of these teachers, especially the board member, and you know, what a difficult job it is just to be a teacher with kids coming in person. My biggest fear has been since we went virtual, we are letting go of that bottom, call it the bottom 20% of kids that already had an impossible mission given their own life, apathy by the parents, their own learning difficulties, struggle socialization-wise, perhaps depression, I can go, the list can go on and on, but it's that. If anybody that's been to high school, you can remember when you were there, there's a group of people that are kind of the untalked to and the untouched and the unknown, you know, they just kind of shuffle through each day. So now we've taken them and put them in a virtual world. My own son, God bless him, he's the smartest of my three kids, is really good, he'll be a smart kid his whole life, at least with bookwork. Something like this works wonderfully for him and all of the things that Tammy brings up, you know, that can be utilized by the parents, well, that works well for us too. What about that 20% where the parents are not in the picture or they're just not willing to be in the picture? Or, you know, quite frankly, the kid is just unwilling to listen to his parents and the parents have had it. We're letting them down in this process and if we don't get them back, you can't tell me as an educator of many years, I've had many teachers tell me I'm right, we've discussed this very sentence. You can't tell me that as a teacher, when they're in-person in class, that you don't have a better handle on those 20% or 15% of kids that are the most difficult. And you equally cannot tell me, second sentence, that those kids in a virtual learning environment are not being let out. And what are we going to, and this isn't every district, Kevin, I am not singling out Penfield, I've talked to people in Harper, I talked to their superintendent the other day, you know, at a game that we were talking about it. And the truth is, those kids are the ones that we're going to look back on this and say, where did we really fail them? And then if you even have 5% of the kids that are normally in the middle and they start sliding back, now you're talking about a percentage of kids that we can't withstand versus the risk benefit of putting them back in school. And I also want to, and by saying this, I have not forgotten the fact that if we get in requests for funding, we can get COVID money before December to help us with that transition to getting them back in sixth through 12, even in a hybrid setting. So I would ask if you look at that and that's what I'll remove for you. I'm yelling so that, I don't have a mic, I apologize, it was kind of gross. They normally would not even yell.
We can hear you just fine.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, with what Brandon said, it does just bring the mind of the whole child up behind. And that is truly where I'm at with us. You know, I don't, I don't know if it has to look like, you know what, we got a couple of kids failing here, they're failing two or more. I know that we can check it for athletics, we need to check it for academics, you know, and we need to say, okay, this child's two or more, we need to bring him in for some one-on-one and or her and get them going to where they need to be. Some of these, I mean, God bless my family, my kids are super supportive to my grandchildren. And, but I will not forget, that's not a rich house situation. And.
I like that, that is my situation.
Right, and that's why I keep bringing it up, like I, I didn't have someone say, do you have your spelling class? Let's do this. My mom has seven kids, she was lucky to get them fast, lucky enough. So, no, it's just a different case scenario. From, we offer public education, so every child has a chance to learn and that we are family, we always said that we're families and kids. So we need to say, we're not going to leave these kids behind, we're going to get them in here and give them what they need and we're going to let these kids learn virtually if it's working for them. If it's not working for them, they need some in-person instruction and support and how we can do that.
Can we define what not working for them means? I just want.
Failure.
Like, are we talking just grade failure or failure as a whole as a person? That's what I'm just trying to.
I say failure is the same as Brandon, the whole child. That's what we've committed to in our strategic plan. And so if the parent or guardian feels, you know what, my child needs in-person, I just want us to be able to offer them that. If we're fine at home and we got it going on and yeah, my child, I want to keep him here and they're struggling, whichever way, mental or academic, you know, we need to say, okay, these are the resources we have and what can, what more can we do to help you as a parent? You know, we have counselors, we work with, is it some appointment we work with, you know? So we have this, we have the time where they can come to get internet access and we're bringing them in for that, right?
Those who don't have internet or have no or no internet accessibility.
Right.
We allow them to come into internet as a.
Right, the wifi. So we're doing that so they can get, and I feel like, okay, so if they have wifi but it's, they're still failing, then we need to say, okay, this is what we're doing. You know, I go back to the athletics. I feel like if we can come together to play our athletics, we can come together to learn. There might be some students that were like, their parents or guardian may have said, you know what, you're not going out for volleyball or et cetera, et cetera this year because I feel very uncomfortable with that. But there's parents that have the choice to say. But there's parents that have the choice to say, I think we can do this, and I think we can be safe. So, you know, you're gonna have that opportunity. That's the only thing. That's how I'm looking at it, as far as the academic skill, you know, if, if parents wanna say, you know what? Grandma knows about this, this is not safe, but possibly expose her. Totally understand, my mother is in our home as well, eighty-one years old. But if, if the parent's like, you know what, I'm a nurse, and I've been doing this since March, and we seem to be able to have a handle on it. And me and my husband work, and my sixth grade son needs support. And he's, he's homeless, he needs socialization for his mental health, and he needs support academically, I'd like them in person. You know, so it's an opportunity for people to have the choice. We, we already know that we are a public school district to provide support to the whole child, and that's what my goal is.
And then if we have, we have in-person students for building.
You got it.
Okay. Now, I'm not sure if I remember my question. Oh, um, uh, what is the capacity at the middle school and the high school of students that can return? The number, what, do we have a number of people that, max?
It depends on what you want that to go like. Because we talked about those, um, schools in the area, some that brought all kids back. Uh, maybe some that brought kids back two days a week, and then they don't go on Friday, or they don't go on Wednesday. Which is like we do with the hybrid with the elementary, the K-five. There's some schools that look that way. And there are, uh, uh, those that, well, those are the three ways. So it's either it looks like a hybrid from K-five. And then there's the, all the students are back, and they only go four days a week. Then there's all the students are back and can go on five days a week.
So we went to, when we did, we, uh, voted on the hybrid for the K through five. We were going to do five days a week, but then what happened?
The numbers were too high.
The numbers were too high. So I guess I'm looking at for middle school, what the too high the number is. And for high school, the too high the number is, because I know what we want is five days a week. That's not what's gonna happen depending on certain numbers. I want to be clear about that.
So there's five hundred and forty students that, um, fit in the actual middle school, based on the number of teachers. That's like saying twenty-nine, thirty students per class, that's filling it up. Okay. So if you do half of them, then we're talking two hundred and, uh, twenty-five, twenty-two, and then two seventy. That's two hundred and seventy per two days and two days. That's two hundred and seventy. So that's instead of thirty kids in class, it's fifteen students in class. Now, that's taking the classroom and still saying that that is not, um, six feet apart. So what we got in K-five was a two days a week because it allowed for smaller numbers in your social distance. So for middle school, if the parents who are answering these surveys that we send out, and they say that there's only not half, but say thirty percent, thirty percent of them want students in class. Then that would still be a two-two, like a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. But it makes the class with nine to twelve students in a class, instead of fifteen. That's what we did with the elementary. It allowed for the social distance, it allowed for the cleaning, it allowed for, uh, opportunities. The only difference is that the teachers, they have to, at the K-two building, the teachers have to teach in-person two days, and they still have the other half of their class they have to teach virtually. And then come Wednesday, they're teaching all twenty-two kids. And then on Thursday, they get the other half of their class, and they still have to teach the other version. But at the, uh, the three-five building, there's eighteen classes. But there's only four classes per grade level, so that's twelve. And then we have other teachers doing chess virtually. So that makes it a little different, like, I'm a teacher and I'm only doing virtual. But it's different, you have to do virtual, and you have to do in-person.
Kevin, at high school, isn't it a little easier though to have a student, at the virtual table, the virtual table, I'm gonna use those, to actually watch a lecture that's being conducted in person?
It is.
As opposed to we did.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was, that's what I was thinking. It is, watching a lesson being taught compared to the older one, compared to the, uh, older one, it is. The only difference is when you're talking about middle school and high school. Elementary, they don't get the, uh, lunch together, that would happen sometimes. They don't get the specials together, because they come in with different grade levels, band, choir, singing. And in the third thing is the classes also. So even though I'm a sixth grader, I go from this class to that class, middle school is not as much as high school. I may be a tenth grader, I'm sitting in the left grade classroom. So there's three opportunities for, uh, crossing. And based on other schools that are, uh, knowing what they're doing, they're having the teachers stay away from the kids. Now, I know that sounds kind of very negative and ugly, but what they're doing is, they're having the kids out there, and the teachers up there. Well, even if they're teaching, but there is no guy at practice where you go over and help teach the students, saying, oh, you need to do this, and then do this. They're keeping them back behind their desk. Which is why there's a couple of our neighboring schools that, when we heard that the, um, students were tested positively, and then you start running, wait a minute, why did all those students have to go over to the teacher then? Because they were told by the superintendent, you are not to be around the kids. So, and, and, and I say it that way, but I'm sure there's enough terminology that was used and warranted. But that is another one of those, um, cool ways. But it is, okay, but you're out there, and the teacher's here. Not like it used to be, where I get up from talking to dogs, I'm teaching, I'm teaching dogs, and I went to Brandon, and I started saying, I don't know, Brandon, look, try this. That, that's the difference. Um, early on, there was a conversation about just keeping the kids in pod. But that wasn't your guide, because you still have the lunch. With a number of students, that he'll still have to come together at lunch. And the size of the cafeteria as far as social, uh, distance, there are challenges. And yes, there are districts that are out there doing that. And they are, um, finding themselves, which was mentioned in, in, I think it's recent, so, but there's the in and the out. More, some are doing in and out more than others. The latest thing has been that your teachers test positive, they're trying to get sub. Even though this teacher is standing way near the teacher out in the community, that tested positive, but there's no sub for these students in their classes, and they're coming into class. Instead of running, uh, without sub. So we've taken some of our, um, COVID money as far as hiring subs, because we're preparing for not the last minute, and then say, now we're back, but we're preparing for when they come. So we're not waiting till last minute. So hopefully that answers some of what you.
A little bit, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know that there's, it's hard to, because we don't have any members about what's coming in and what we want as far as parents go, um.
I, um, Kevin?
Yes.
Has there been any, at one point, we talked about half-days. And I know there was concern about transportation and also about cleaning. But, um, from what I understand, like, we're having to clean halfway through the day anyway. If, if, is there any thought, or could you give a thought to, like, even the middle schoolers, if they went half a day and had instruction and then did their homework the other half a day at home?
Yeah, that's also another model that's been, um, questioned in other districts. And I'm using as an example from getting all the information from other districts.
Is there anyone trying that right now?
Not from the districts that are in the region, because they said, or parents said that was more of a inconvenience, or more of a headache for them, to where they much rather it's a full day, that they know their child is there, even though it was only two days, than it is a half a day. So now, instead of paying a babysitter or asking someone to watch my child, I would rather it be a full day than a three days instead of, uh, a half a day. So that was one reason. I was at the K through third, or K through fifth, or sixth through twelfth, it was all. And they tried, when they tried, the conversation was the kindergarten, junior, twelfth grade, that was the conversation. Now.
I would be interested if the middle schoolers' parents would have a, this many weeks in, if, if that would be more appealing than it was at the beginning.
And, and with the high school, it was more about clean at the time. It wasn't about, well, who's gonna watch my kid babysitting, it wasn't that. It was more about the, uh, cleaning of the building. Lunch, uh, sack lunch all the way out to where they didn't have the, the lunch, um, angle with the larger groups. There was quite a few things that you could take with this superintendent's word, pulling your hair out, and having these conversations early on, and so.
Yeah, but, thank you.
That kind of goes along with something that, um, you know, maybe some of the electives could be virtual and solo. Or just not virtual, but, um, I think that goes back to, we know COVID is not going away, even with the new organization, there are gonna be people that just are like, no, we're not, as our family, just like with the flu, they're gonna opt out of getting that. And, um, so as Brandon said earlier, you know, we're talking a couple of years. This, I don't see it really changing a whole lot, like, this is our new way of life, and wearing masks, washing hands, and taking every effort to be as safe as we possibly can, and designing our classrooms to protect the teachers and students with the plexiglass and things such as that, and figuring out, you know, maybe it's a matter of just messing by classroom for lunch. You walk in, and you walk out, and you go into the classroom for your lunch, or you've been, you know, sitting in your own desk, or whatever. Um. So I, I just, I had a hard time thinking and saying, you know, well, in January, it's all gonna be better, or next fall, or a year from now. And that's where the no child left behind enters my mind. Um, I think our goal needs to be, how are we going to operate with COVID?
I agree. Um, I also have questions about, when we were talking about extracurriculars or that, um, band and choir. I, I, I'm concerned that we're losing, they're losing the education that is necessary to continue. Um, are we capable, uh, for those who are virtual, are we capable, um, finding extracurriculars to do a meeting virtually? Like, uh, I, I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, because I know, like, for instance, fall is, you can't do that virtually. Um, but I, uh, like, maybe chess club, or, I, I. Do an activity, so that they are capable of participating with the teacher or the um, volunteer who has already been okay to do so, to reach out, because those are necessary for, I was a student that benefited from those extracurriculars, band being one of those. And without having that, I'm not sure I would have been as successful as I was as a student. And so if you take that away, I'm thinking about that being taken away, I was a, a bandleader, I was a section leader. Um, I was very passionate about music, and those students who are passionate need to have that. Whether it's singing, whether it's playing instrument, whether it's just even communicating and talking about music, period. It is necessary, I'm concerned for that. Um, obviously, not everybody does or uses those extracurriculars, but there's also the drama club, they're not capable of getting together. That is the extra thing to not think about math, to not think about science, to not think about the, the classes that I was struggling in. So I really want to communicate, or I want to, I want to bring them back too, and I wanna know how about doing that.
I agree, Alicia, and I'm wondering how we can get together every single evening for certain practices or athletics, but we cannot do that for the band, or choir, or drama, or et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is there, is there a reason that we can't do that?
Yeah, the first was the, um, the research that said that the playing instruments in the scene was, um, because they're doing that without a mask on. And so that was the reason that the, uh, Michigan, um, band.
MSBOA.
The whole thing, that they, that's the reason they said that was, uh, um, if none of those competitions would take place, they would be listed at the end of October. So we haven't yet to hear from them yet. Uh, the same thing was that singing was considered even worse than playing the instrument. Playing an instrument is blowing out, but singing is, is singing out. Uh, there were, um, there was the reason, again, we're talking about the secondary classes. And they're coming back, that became a question about, well, if they can't do that, what would they do? Because they're wearing masks, and they're in class, and you sing, you're singing without a mask on. If you are, uh, in a band, you're playing, and there's all the pieces, special gadgets that, um, colleges, that they're trying to use in the outdoor, and this facial theme, all of those themes are out there. Those are things that we're looking at now.
So we're looking at bell coders, and this maybe possibility of having what, I don't know, I'm just calling it a split mask, so that it's a mask, and they can put a mouthpiece to their lips, and capable of, when they pull it out, the mask is now covering their face. I want to make sure that we're making sure that that's the case, uh, that we're taking care of that.
And we're researching by watching some of the schools that are out there already, and they're having these classes. And we're doing that research to see if that's actually working, or if that's where some of the complications are coming in from.
Because I know that the MSBOA said no to competition, they did, to my knowledge, and I'd say that they could not come together. And when I, I'm saying this, I know, because I'm in the, because I've been in the band and understand how it works. Maybe there's a way of dividing it where the brass, or I don't, I don't wanna even say that, that the clarinets come in on this day, and this one on Friday, we are virtually together, and that's making us together as a band. For choir, I'm not sure how that, we could make that happen, but maybe we can, again, make pods, like we had people like yours talking about students in classrooms. Uh, I know that, um, Link is out there, and they are marching. And for the seniors, I know how important right now, and how much it stinks, that they're not gonna get that one, that they were, that they know they could have got as a competition. Or just even having that last piece, because, or just anything. I know how important that is. I really do, I think we as a board need to look to get them back together.
So like, dealing with those schools that we have, for that thing, right?
Okay.
That's, yeah.
Because they are a big band, and they are very competitive. I know this because I competed against them. So it is, we want the same thing for our students here, they want it too, and I want to give that to them.
So we're looking at, um, extracurricular activities, if athletics is in play, what extracurricular activities could also be allowed to strongly come back for those opportunities? So we are looking at the same thing. So we are looking at the same thing, but we do want to make sure that we stay within what can be offered without reversing what has already been put out as far as, as I may make an example. We can't say we're going to bring back that activity and then allow that group of students to have that activity. And then have someone go away and then doing that, then why don't you just bring them all back? It has to be reasonable. Same thing for the parents who are able to have the kids come in and use wifi. Well, it's not a class of kids coming in and using wifi. It is those that we said was in the issue that they had, or no internet accessibility. And the board said, well, we gotta, we can do better than that. But we're coming up, we can't just say, yeah, we're going to start making copies. So it came to hotspots, it came the individual trying to reach out. So these are the phases that we're wondering. And the same thing with the extracurricular activities. It's, it's a, that was important.
You know, with what you're saying, Kevin, I think one day, one of the clarifications that might help have your understanding before we are prepared to vote is, so take the band for instance, if we vote to return to school in person for those parents choosing that option for their students or virtual. So if we have students that are in the band and we return in person, the ones that choose to go virtual, how will they be able to participate in that class? You know? I just think that would be something, not just band but choir. If, if we're going to try to make it work in person for some of those, then incorporating the children that had to stay virtual, but participate in choir or some of the, you know, those classes to make it work for all students. We're always going to have, have virtual. I mean, I don't see beyond that at this point. As far as Brandon says, far down the line.
Yeah, I agree.
Because if someone is exposed or positive that we have quarantine, we are going to need virtual. And but for the in-person option, we want to make sure it's affordable between those.
Okay, Kevin?
Yes, Dottie?
My thought on all of this that we're discussing, it's very important. But at the same time, the COVID is rising, we're spiking. And so for me to say that I want all these kids back, I do. But at this time with the spiking of the COVID, I'm not sure it's the right move. And I would like to have you come back to the board meeting with how we can fix a failing rate without turning, without, fix a failing rate without our students returning to school full time. That way we can decide, once you get that information to us, we could decide the whole board what we should do. I just think that's the way we should do it.
Yes, someone, I appreciate that, Dottie, someone mentioned that earlier and I was trying to go through my notes, but I got three pages here in front of me. Someone mentioned that earlier and they said, if not, then what? And I think that was Abby that said, if we're not, then what was it that we're going to do that's going to be different? Brandon?
I just want to comment on the heels of what Dottie said, just throw this out there because Don mentioned it once and it was just passing. And it's very important because we have a small sample size in our school. When you look at everything that's being done with athletics, you have a very big set of football teams. Some of them, you know, with numbers 50 to 60 people on a team that are now entering their fourth week of competition without a positive COVID test. You have, I can't remember, you have volleyball, same thing, soccer. They went through a quarantine, but it was one or two people. And I guess what I'm saying here is, I realize that there has been a community spiking, but we are also, you know, dealing with kids that have been around each other all summer, to be really honest. And they've probably already had contact with them. I'm not a scientist, I can't sit here and prove that. But I'm telling you, these kids are seeing each other anyway. They're all together, a lot of them in athletics. When I hear Alicia bring up the band, it breaks my heart because we're shortchanging them, even though we can do this other stuff. And I just think that, again, I love using the words risk benefit. The benefits of the kids are outweighs the risks that we're facing. And if we keep listening to, well, we went from 2.5% to 4% of positive, you know, rate. Okay, if I talk to the Department of Health and Human Services, they will never let these kids come back. That's a fact. They will sit there until the last minute of year two and tell you, well, you know, there's some risk, we better not do it. As opposed to doing what they do in some other countries. They look at the elderly or the higher risk and they segregate them, unlike what we did in our nursing home at the start. That's another story. The point is, risk benefit for our kids has got to be part of the equation. But I definitely respect what you're saying, Dottie, and I know it needs to be looked at. I'm not naive. But it has to be looked at from both sides. That's, I guess, all I'm saying. And I really thank you for bringing it up too.
Good point, good point, Brandon, thank you.
And thank you.
At what point does the health department, I just want to, maybe I don't understand this, right? But because it's going up as a county, did the health department finally just say at what percentage, nobody goes to school? Or I just want to clarify, that is the case?
Yes.
And what percentage is that?
And I was going to leave that in my final comments, but I believe you shared it now. We meet with the health department every Monday, the area superintendents in Calhoun County. And there has been some concerns that the superintendents have brought with the health department because it is based on not seven days, but 14 days. And if it's 14 days at where it is now, which is plus six, when the number was 4.0, was the conversational piece before some of the districts started bringing students back to school. So then the conversation went to a matrix that's being used that they expect for each district to be able to use. However, in our last meeting, they said we've gone seven days where we've been 6.0, just like 6.14, my name was 6.4. They're saying that then come next Monday, there's conversation of the health department could tell all school districts in any county that you have to go back to virtual until these numbers come down. And realistically, what is being said at those meetings, when we're holding those meetings, is that it's not happening in the school. It's happening in the community with social gatherings. And it's happening with people who are having parties and weddings, weddings or backyard barbecues, whatever, so occurrence happening out there. The students are then coming back to the school. And then a teacher who may have been at that party, which is kind of what Brandon was sharing earlier, they're still out there getting together. But it's not even the small group that they're concerned about. It's those large group party groups, colleges that are closing up. A lot of these colleges close up. Then Dr. Corporal has been closed for 14 days because their attorneys, lawyers are out and just all have a big old party. Then the numbers went up and then they shut it down. So that's the concern. And right now, as I mentioned earlier, Calhoun County is considered the highest surge and increase in the lower peninsula. And the conversation that is also one of the higher numbers in the Midwest. That's just because of the surge that's occurring. This is, it's concerning with the health department. And what they don't want, and this is the message that we're getting, they don't want the situation to where so many get sick and then the hospitals get filled and there's no beds. And then all of a sudden, it's a not being able to care for those who are sick. So that's, that's the concern that they're bringing to us on last Monday. I was supposed to bring up everyone.
Since we're talking about Calhoun County and our primary hospital in front, I had my appendix out two weeks ago. There was one bed being used at 75. So I think we're a long ways away from spiking on bed usage. That's how this all started. We have to flatten the curve. We've come a long ways now to, now we're looking at our kids' tunnel health and our kids' futures. The one cautionary thing I want to say is the Department of Health and Human Services is going to want to look at who as an employer is in a safe working environment. Okay, and I understand that. But what level that is is going to be very critical. Because as a college, it's way different. You can take your Claire College body, I have a college student, put them on virtual and they're going to succeed, they're paying the money to be there. Most of them aren't. We can't say that. And if we go completely virtual, I think we're still not dealing with the 20% or more that we have enveloped or more.
But it might not be our decision. And that's why I want to make sure that we are covering those bases just in case we don't get that decision.
When, and I hear you, but when, as a board, we're looking at education being compulsory as opposed to college, which is voluntary. And you're telling me I have to do it this way? The consequences be damned, then I'm telling you, we may have legal situations. Whether we can force their hand on how we do this safely versus you just get to determine a number and this is how we're going to do it. I'm just telling you, there's some pushback there. And really, it all comes down to what's happening with our governor. You can't say it's not. Because right now, with the Supreme Court ruling, there's pushback right now through the different departments that are staying front. I'm not saying that some of them aren't right. I'm saying that we have to look at that very carefully as a board before we take our children who are forced to go. Because here's what's going to happen in the end. You're going to have parents say, I'm just going to homeschool. I know I keep bringing this up, guys, it's going to be reality. Just get a homeschool, I'm going to do this differently from now on. The government has failed me, I'm not going back to this. My kid didn't get to be in band, my kid didn't get to do all the fun stuff, my kid didn't get to do anything. Why am I even there? I'm going to go online, we're going to tax ourselves out of it. And I'm talking to you teachers over there. There are a lot of you that if we continue down this road for two years, will be looking from the outside and saying, what just happened? And I know I've brought that up before, but I'll bring it up again. This isn't college like Dr. Corporal, this is actually high school where you can lose your job if we can't afford to pay it. All right, that's my soapbox, I'm sorry again for shouting them.
Yeah, I think to Alicia's point, we are protected by our Calhoun County Health Department. So if we had an outbreak of the flu, schools have been shut down because it's more than a certain number. And I do believe that they would do the same thing with the COVID outbreak. They would protect our community and say, I feel it's not going to just be Penn Field at that point in time. There would be a county situation to say, you know. So that is something else that we can consider. You know, the county health department is not going to allow in-person instruction if there's a health risk that becomes beyond our control. At that time, it would get pulled back by all those other protective people. So, and we know they're taking that very seriously now too. With meaning with the area superintendents and taking the time to form all those communications have added to their job. I mean, everyone's job has had an added due to the COVID. And I don't know one job that someone can say, oh, it hasn't affected me at all. So even if it's a stay at home, or dad or grandparent.
Seven hundred days.
Right, so I mean, if the arm is stable, because it wasn't, and you know, this isn't what I signed up for. Well, it's not, nobody has signed up for COVID chaos. And so that's something else that we can remember. Our health department is watching those numbers very closely. They are tracking the direction that it's going. And I'm thankful for that.
Kevin?
Yes, Dottie?
I'm listening to everybody and the problem that I see is that if one child comes back to school or one teacher dies from this, it's on my soul. I feel like it's something we really need to talk as a full board. Because coming January, you're going to have four brand new board members and this board better get it right before we get on to the next new board members. Otherwise, it just will never happen. It has to be done now.
Okay, so we will, there's a comment from a panel again. Teacher that had put in after the question, but I don't see her on. I think we're good. Superintendent Calhoun?
Yes, I do appreciate all of these dialogues and discussions because it is rich, it is healthy. And I appreciate the fact that we can have these, this dialogue and some professionals that at the same time understand that it is okay that we're seeing that there's a coming and going when it comes to decisions. But I will say that this is, Dottie had just mentioned, this is a tremendous amount of pressure to be placed on school board to make decisions in this time. That's the Department of Education when they handed that over and said, we're not going to make the decision at the state level, we're going to leave it up to the school boards. That was an undertaking that everyone is going to come to understand that the school boards are truly appreciated for hearing the public and bringing to the table the discussion that takes place. And I appreciate the fact that it's done in such a professional manner and that we can still go away from the table and understand we're trying to do what's in the best interest of the Penn Field schools and students. And Don has said that numerous times and I agree. If there's a true appreciation for the fight and the fight that this board has, it wouldn't be any other way. You're just not like, yeah, whatever. Then why exist on this school board? So I appreciate the fact that I'm going to go publicly saying that I appreciate the fact that there are kids in every corner of this community that can say that there's a board that cares about them and that there are adults who are here to represent and speak for them when they don't speak or when they can't speak. And that as an employee of this district, that we're going to continue to do what we can, we're going to continue to make adjustments where needed and try to meet the needs of all the students. That 20%, I was one of those 20%. I was in Penn Field, but I was one of that 20%. And I do understand that there were certain people that had to reach out and look out for Kevin and his three little brothers and three big brothers. And so I said, I get, I'm not going to be deaf here or turn around. But we will continue to work together to make sure that we meet the needs of our kids. And if this is the type of, type of coming together that needs to occur, then I say then we do. And it is okay for our community to understand that we can come together in this type of conversation dialogue and try to move forward. So I just want to make sure that you know I appreciate you board and that I do appreciate those adults who are out there who we don't recognize and we don't see. They're out there trying to fight for the same reason. That is what every student needs to do. So again, I appreciate that. I've already made the other comment about what the health department is saying. So that's all I have to share for today. I've already made the other comment about what the health department is saying, so I'm sorry to share with you.
Um, board comments? We didn't just go around this morning, starting with you, exactly, I think I've said enough of your things. I mean, I I did ask lots of questions tonight, challenging, I hope. Um, but I just want to put a shout out there to everybody, whoever I don't even want to say to just the teachers, everyone who's making this, trying to work or trying to make this work. I appreciate you. And please continue to reach out to us as a board. I'm sure Kevin, Mr. Simmons says the same thing, please reach out to me, um, for anything that you have concerns about. And just thank you, thank you to the board, thank you for this experience because, I mean, I don't know if I'll be here next year, but I have learned a whole lot. I appreciate everybody, just everything, everything, the dialogue here and making me and helping me to feel safe to be able to communicate with everybody in this community and as a board. So thank you.
I, is someone, are anyone talking right now?
No, we'll turn it back.
Okay, um, I would like to say thanks to you, Kevin, and the board that's been here this night, tonight. It's been a great, um, session that we've needed for a long time. And I think that with the the whole board working on this as a team, we can get through this. And I thank all of you for that. But before I get off, I wanted to tell you that Craig sent me a message that he could not get his computer to work. So he's been listening to us on YouTube, and he said we all did a great job. So I just wanted to tell you guys that's what he just wrote me.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, I no longer see Abby.
Yeah, I saw that they involved with Abby, but it's not, it's not Jesus.
So thank you, Abby, for your input tonight and, uh, Brandon.
All right, well, you have the vote to motion, but so, um, I'll be brief if you can believe that. I just want to say, because I think Daddy touched on something very, very important in this whole thing, and that's if we lose one life, is that going to be, um, on your soul? And I I want you to know this, Daddy, and I want everybody out there that has listened to my position on this about getting the kids back in school. I want you to know that there are very, and and this is a community-wide issue with those that are at home that have worked in a while, those that have been doing the professions they love. I mean, I've been out there personally the entire time. I don't have that issue, but so many do, and so do our students. And if we are, if we are missing some of those students and we were, for example, to lose one, God forbid you a suicide. That's another soul on the other side of the wall. I think as a board, it has been so hard, as we are pulled in two very different directions with this. One is absolutely live in a bubble and will be one hundred percent safe, end of story. And I don't disagree with the science behind that in principle. But when you get into the fact that we're talking about individual personalities of each kid, and you, as a teacher, know they are so different, everyone. And then you try to do that with different squares on your screen and try to communicate with them over the phone. It can be like trying to communicate with a telecommunicator sometimes, when you want to get them either off your line or you're trying to understand them. This is what we're faced with. And I really believe that if, well, let me say it this way, and I'll be done. There's not one person listening or that's here right now in this meeting that has not been able to put a name down on paper of somebody close to them that they've lost to COVID. This is going to be that seminal period in all of our lives that will always look back. I mean, more so than were you there when Ronald Reagan was shot or something like that, the shuttle. This is bigger than that for all of us, for our students and for our teachers, for our administrators, for our board. And when we look at going forward, I do believe there can be the potential for loss of life. But on the student's side, in mental health and in the families of those students that are getting lost, as well as potentially the COVID disease itself. I really think we have to look at COVID multidimensionally for what it can do to the family unit and the student in particular, and what it can do physically. And I don't discount what you're saying, Daddy, because originally I would have said, bring everybody back. At this point, I know there's some people that will refuse to do that anyway, and we have to work with our district. We ignore those parents that wanted their kids in person. And now I think we're starting to see those repercussions. I just ask that we 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 keep fresh eyes. I like what Kevin's perspective and collaboration is saying in that it's rich. A lot of what we said is, but I did not want to go by without commenting on the soul of also our students on the other side and their families. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Brandon.
Well, my board comment this evening is that I agree with Daddy. You know, one soul lost is too many, just as the, um, situation, if there's a student driving to school and there's a terrible accident, we had that a couple of years ago with two girls. You know, we didn't say no more driving to school. You know, it it's a very unfortunate thing. We had a suicide in St. and West last year, you know? It's heartbreaking. And as it would be as if we were to lose one COVID situation. So we cannot stop teaching our children. If we are coming together for so many other things in life, then we can come together to one. We can, as a Penn Field board, we can make sure every single safety precaution in our power is in place to protect our staff and our students. I believe that. I believe that we can do this together. And I appreciate everyone coming tonight that participated in this. And hopefully, it's been two hours, this will help it. So on Monday, our meeting, you know, hopefully not too much on, not so, ten to two hours, we're having that much fun. Yes, and, um, Kevin, just one other thing is, and I'm not sure you wanted to bring up the difference in change for Mondays.
Yes. I did want to bring it up, and, um, and I'm sorry, because I forgot this also, we have we have a survey that's out there, and we've gotten about sixty percent of the parents to fill it out. And this goes to the question again, that we need to know if they're asking for their child, because they have to put their child's name on the list, and they have to say if they want it to be virtual or if they want it to be in person. So this is another one of those checks that we need them to fill this out because it's the new week tomorrow, and tomorrow is when we're supposed to pull that data together. Some of our parents before said, I didn't fill it out, and I got I got virtual. Well, you got virtual because you didn't fill it out and say that you want it hybrid and run it in person. So I want to make that comment. Uh, we are looking at trying to move our board meeting, we're gonna put the communication out. We're not sure we can do it yet. We're, uh, thinking our technology team's gonna be to pull it off through the auditorium so that the, uh, seating opportunities and, uh, public comments to where there's a public that'll be able to come up, use a mic, and that we're actually use the auditorium and based on the space and the seat that we should, um, be okay with back to the in-person because of the, uh, elimination of rejected votes. Okay, and the fact that we would still do the virtual, to where we still do our live feed, so we still have that opportunity for those who feel like they don't want to come out for whatever reason or are quarantined, so that we'll still have the live feed and still have that opportunity. Okay, so I appreciate you reminding me about that one. Let's go on the other, the health department. So, Penny.
I need a motion. I need a motion.
I'll say. Okay, I'll take the vote.
Yeah.
Daddy, um, motion on the table to adjourn. It's been seconded, and we just need your vote, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a yes. Gordon?
Yes.
Miss Brown?
Yes.
Four oh, that's what's left so far, and I think a motion is adjourned. But Karen, then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Daddy.
Thank you, Daddy.
Good night, Daddy.
Good night, everyone.
And Craig and Abby, you're there, Scott, too. We off now, or we still talking?